Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for coming. And I would like to ask if you would stand and join us in the pledge.
Where is it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, it's quite a time.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll? Whoa. I'm here.
Mayor McLean?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kreitzer?
Here.
Councilmember Baca?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
President.
Councilmember Humbert?
Here.
Councilmember Kness?
Here.
Councilmember Pollak?
Here.
Councilmember Wallen?
President.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is our consent agenda. Would you please read the consent agenda into the record?
Item 2A, approval of the December 5th, 2017, City Council minutes. Item 2B, approval of the December 19th, 2017, City Council minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Councilman Wallen?
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion from Councilman Wallen, second from Councilman Edwards.
I'd be happy to second that.
Little finger wave. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mayor McLean?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kreitzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Humbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Kness?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollak?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallen?
Yes.
Your Honor, the motion passes nine zero to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the regular agenda. City Manager, are there any changes, corrections, additions?
Your Honor, there's no changes, corrections, or additions this evening.
Thank you. Next item is item four. Oh, we probably should.
Mayor, I move that we approve the regular agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Humbert?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mayor McLean?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kreitzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Humbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Kness?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollak?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallen?
Yes.
Your Honor, the motion passes nine zero to approve the regular agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is ceremonies. Foray, comments by outgoing City Council members. Well, since I'm mayor, I have privilege to make the first comments. I want to thank the council. I want to thank our great staff. I want to thank the citizens of Brighton for everything that has made the last eight years of my existence on City Council a really good experience. I think we've accomplished a lot together. I think Brighton has grown. I think we've gone forward. And that's a good thing, as opposed to the opposite. Just, my family's been very supportive of me, even though I've been away a lot of times for long meetings. And I thank them. And I see my wife and my son Gavin here, and father-in-law and sister-in-law, and several other family members here, brother-in-law, and so many friends and others that are here joining us this evening. I want to thank all of you for everything. Mayor Protem? That's all I have to do.
This is for outgoing members, so...
You're not outgoing. You're outgoing from one spot to the next. (Laughter).
I guess we'll let Councilwoman Kness speak next.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. First of all, I think I need to apologize because either I'm going through adolescence, or my voice, and my voice is changing, or maybe I have a bad cold. So if I cough, sneeze, or any sniffle, just know that's what's going on. I was thinking about, 20 years ago, I was working part-time at the School District Administration Building, and I received this letter from the city of Brighton. And you know when you receive letters like that, it's like being called to the principal. You wonder, uh-oh, did I not pay a ticket? Maybe it was the water bill? And when I read it, I remember talking to Kelly Corbett, and I said, "I think the city's made a mistake." Because I got this letter, and it said that I was going to be the Grand Marshal of the Second Parade of Lights. And I remember telling Kelly, "How can that be? How can an ordinary person have such an extraordinary opportunity?" And that's how I felt. Over the past, as a wife, a mother, grandmother, a teacher on the Board of Ed, and now in City Council, I've had a lot of really extraordinary opportunities. Especially serving on City Council, I've met a lot of wonderful people in the city and in the surrounding communities. I'm a learner, so I've had a lot of great learning experiences. I know a lot about oil and gas that I didn't think I would ever know. And apologies to Curtis, but I know a lot about wastewater that probably more than I ever really cared to know. So I've appreciated those learning opportunities that I've had. I'm gonna do a little analogy. It's a little bit off, because I'm not dead and I'm not dying, but you know, quite often at funerals, people say that that person has had a life well-lived. And I really feel that way because of the opportunities that I've had in our city. The city has afforded me the opportunities to have a life well-lived. I want to first thank the community for giving me opportunities to join a lot of different meetings and be a part of a lot of different groups. I appreciated that. I want to thank the staff. This city has an excellent staff. They're not only great people, but they're also very dedicated, and they have a lot of expertise, and the city is really blessed with the staff. I want to thank my colleagues on council. They've put up with me asking a million questions. The mayor has been very good about me always, every meeting except the last, or maybe the time before. I didn't bring up, I always bring up policy items, items that come from the community. So council's been very good and has tolerated all my questions. I want to thank my family. Before serving on council, I didn't really understand how many hours of commitment it took. Yes, every Tuesday, but usually there's two or three other evenings a week that council is asked to attend an event. And being gone from family, it's difficult on families. And you'd have to know my husband, that Adam doesn't cook. And so, you know, when I'm gone, he just makes bologna sandwiches. So I think he's saying, "Finally, Joan can make these bologna sandwiches." (Laughter). Because she'll be home. I've missed a lot of grandkids and basketball games, concerts, assemblies. It'll be good to see those kinds of things. So I've really been honored to serve the community, and I really appreciate that you've given an ordinary person like me extraordinary opportunities, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Joan. Let's see, outgoing, we have Rex, Rex Bell.
As I've thought of this evening's comments, I would be remiss if I did not remember the loss that our communities along the Front Range has experienced the last few days. In Deputy Parish, I've thought so often of our first responders, firefighters, policemen, detectives. I just want to say thank you. I want to honor them and express appreciation, and on behalf of the community and the council, I urge that all of us would just say thank you to a patrolman, an officer, a fireman. Next time you find them eating in the La Estralita, or El Hemador, or wherever you may find them anonymously, pay for their lunch. Stop by and just say thank you. They are worthy of our support and appreciation, and I just want to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts to our firemen and our policemen. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Rex.
It has been a long journey, a joyful journey. Whoever would have thought that eight years ago, that tonight would ever come? And yet it is here. And just as there is a time to say hello, there's times to say goodbye and move on and let other new people with new talents and new insight continue to make a very beautiful picture in Brighton. And that's my privilege tonight. I too want to express appreciation for my family. Angel will not know what to do with me on Tuesday nights. I want to thank her. I want to thank my children tonight for being here. Truly, you are the mainstay in the light of my life. Thank you. God bless you all very much. As I look forward to new adventures, I know that our council is in good hands. I desire above all things that the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts would be acceptable, not only in the community side, but in the sight of our Lord and Savior. Thank you for allowing me to serve you, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bell. And we have comments by City Council members.
Hi. Mr. Mayor, I believe we've got a short video that we'd like to watch right now.
Okay. You insist.
Is that true? Right? That's what I've been told. That's what my notes say.
Is there popcorn, too?
I've worked with Dick McLean for the last 12 years, four years when he served on City Council, and the last eight years when he served as mayor. I help keep his schedule and keep him on track of where he needs to go. And of course, I've got to keep track of all those golf outings and work around his schedule for that.
It's always interesting playing golf with Dick. The way he talks, you think he's great stick, but it makes you feel good to play with him because chances are, you're gonna beat him if he's really not that good.
No, I've known Dick McLean for approximately 40 years, maybe a little longer. Our children went to school together at Southeast Elementary up through their graduation, Jennifer and Sean, and we've become good friends over the years, done a lot of things together. We like to play golf. We are going to hopefully travel together in the near future, now that he doesn't have all these meetings to attend all the time.
So I've had the privilege of working with the mayor for the past six years, since I began with the city in the Public Information Office. I get to work just a couple offices away from him. And as mayor, I think what's really cool is he's always here. He treats us like it's his nine-to-five job, and he's here pretty much almost every day. And when he's not, you kind of wonder, "Where's the mayor?" He's dedicated. He spends time talking to people, responding to emails, knowing what's going on, and that's really, really unique.
Well, I've had the pleasure of working with Mayor McLean for a few months now as City Manager, and one of the things that really stood out to me in just the short time that I've had to work with him is that he has gone ahead and forged relationships with other agencies, with other jurisdictions, in fact, other governments around us, in a way that is going to pay huge dividends for us as a community. And that partnership that he's created on behalf of Brighton, I think, is going to be something that's going to be one of his legacies here in the community.
When he plays, it's interesting. You can always tell if he's been out there, because he just kind of leaves a trail. He doesn't look very hard for his golf balls, and he loses them. So maybe, what do you say? Let's see if we can find a few of his golf balls here around the course.
I've worked with the mayor for many years on development projects, and the mayor always supports staff. And when we go to International Shopping Centers Conference in Vegas, he is the fastest-moving guy. He runs out in front of the rest of us because he wants to go after deals. And he's in great shape, and he's a cheerleader for Brighton, and I really appreciate that about the mayor.
One other thing I would say about the mayor is he and I got to travel to the National League of Cities a few weeks ago. We had a great time together. I got to know him as a person, not just as our mayor. And I was just really impressed with how much he cares about Brighton. His passion for our community is second to none, and I know we're going to really miss his advocacy for our community and for Brighton. And so, Mayor, we appreciate all you've done, and really just want to wish you the best out on the golf course, or whatever it is you choose to do now. And thanks again for all you've done for the city of Brighton.
I actually grew up in Brighton and went to school with his kids. And so, he was my dad's banker, and so, you know, he has really contributed a lot to the community of Brighton as a businessperson, and now, most recently, as the mayor. And I get to work with Dick on lots of different things. We serve on the E470 Board together and have for several years, and we've served at Metro Mayor's Caucus, and of course, in all of our different regional capacities. He's been a wonderful mayor, a wonderful council person before that, and really just a great contributor to the city of Brighton.
Dick's been a real asset to the community. He's moved us right up to the top on, you know, what the community thinks of us, and what our surrounding communities think of us.
Well, I've known Dick for well over 30 years. He was a member of our advisory committee when I taught marketing at Brighton High School. He was always available to the students, to myself, to make sure that we put good business principles into the classroom. That's when he was a banker. And then when he became mayor, I got to know him even better. You know, Dick's just the face of Brighton.
Dick is very much a family man, and he's very personable, and I have enjoyed working with him immensely over the last 12 years.
I decided to meet with you today at St. Augustine's, because this is where my husband and I met. We were at a rosary, and my mother had insisted that I meet Dick. So when we were going to communion, she forced me over into the pew where Dick was, so I could be next to him. And after that, we went downstairs, and Dick and I talked for a while, and then we came outside, and he asked us for our first date. And when I met him, he was so involved in the community, and I was a little concerned, though, when I met him. I thought, "Would I be able to do what he does and be out there with him and support this community?" Because he is so caring, and he loves people, and I decided, yes, I will do that. I will be there for him wherever he needs to go. And he's been involved with being on the board for the hospital. He's been with United Power. Oh, there's so many things. He's been with Knights of Columbus. I just tried to think of everything he's done.
But more importantly, he's really built a team in Brighton. The council, the employees, and together, he has been the driving force to make Brighton just a wonderful place to live and to continue to be. I consider it a friend, an honor to be a friend of Mayor McLean, Dick McLean. It's just been a pleasure to know him over the years.
He treats everybody with kindness and as though they're equal. Doesn't matter where he goes, in the building or throughout the city. He knows everybody, and he treats everyone with such kindness and respect. He doesn't act like he's better than anyone because he's mayor. He's just one of us, and I think that's really what's been unique and special to me, working alongside him.
The reason I brought your attention to our church is because he's so active. We've been very active here. And our church means a lot to Dick. My husband is a person that, if you know him, he's a person who loves people, and he gives of himself. And that's who he is. And when he decided to run for mayor, he asked me, and I said, "Yes, you go for it." Because all the years I've known him, he's been involved in the community, and he cares about people. And what he wanted to do was make sure this is the best place for people to live, play, and work. And that was his choice. And I was so happy he made that choice. I think what's most important is not what he's done, it's that he really wanted to make that commitment, because he cared. And when he talks about the council, my husband doesn't say, "It's me." He's not that type of man. He says, "It's the council." And what was important for Dick, to let each one of those people on his council know that what they had to say was important, and he wanted to work with them, and without working with them, things didn't get done. So when you talk to my husband about this, being the mayor of Brighton, it wasn't Dick, it was everybody else that helped support and make Brighton what it was.
So after working with the mayor for the past six years, this is my first time in government, and he's really raised the bar. And I'm going to miss him. I'm going to miss his passion. I'm going to miss his dedication and his kindness. And I wish him well, and hope maybe he'll come back and join a board or commission. Or he could always be a part of our Public Information Team. We'll always find work for him.
I wish I had more time to work with him, and Mayor, wish you nothing but the absolute best in your true retirement at this time. But all that being said, I just think you're a wonderful asset to our community. Thank you for all the things you've done for us. And again, those partnerships that you've created, that just make it that much easier for us to make sure that Brighton has the right seat at the table when we're having difficult conversations in the area and the region. And you're the one who I know really blazed that trail. So we're going to do everything we can to keep maintaining that and protecting that, and thank you so much for your work there.
So Dick, I'm going to miss you and miss seeing you at all of our functions, but don't be a stranger.
You've meant a lot to the city. You've meant a lot to my family. You are the godfather and godmother of my daughter's twins, Max and Olivia Jones. And, you know, we're really close. And I wish you the best, and I'm here for you anytime, as you well know. So you be a good boy.
I'm just so proud of you, and I love him for that. And I'm sure anybody who knows Dick knows that he was sincere. If he came up to you and talked to you, it's because he wanted to. He took that time to talk to you because he cared. And I don't know if there's going to be anybody like him again, because like I said, Dick loves this community. He loves you people. He loved the council. And that's what it's about. It's not the politics, as Dick would tell me. It was just about doing what he could for our community.
I don't know who they were talking about, but it certainly wasn't me. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. My family couldn't have done it without you. Thank you, council.
We have done a lot together.
And staff, you're the backbone. You're what makes it work, so thank you all. Thank you. Now let's get down to business and finish up this agenda so we can eat, drink, and be merry. Mary here?
Now we get those comments you've been waiting for, even more. And I guess I'll go first?
Yeah.
Well, I would just like to say to Dick and to Joan and to Rex, it's been an honor serving with you on council. Dick, your leadership has proven time and time again. I have big shoes to fill, and I look forward to calling on you for advice in the years to come. But you've been a true friend, a real mentor, and your leadership and wisdom are going to be missed on the board, on the council. And Joan, you've always kind of kept me straight, even back in the good old VHS days. Not many people know this, but Joan, I could always count on Joan to proof any letter that went out. I wanted to make sure it was always done right, and I've always been able to call on you, and I appreciate that. And again, we'll be calling on you. And Rex, I'm going to miss your wisdom and your thoughts. The first day on council, you made a comment, and I started keeping track of what I called "rexisms," your ways to put things. But the first one, and my favorite one, was, "Don't load the gun that's going to be used to shoot you." And I appreciate what you've had to offer, and again, we'll be calling on you for your wisdom. So thank you to all three. You'll all sorely be missed.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Humbert?
I'm going to miss every one of these three, and all of them for the same reason. They all have tremendous integrity and diligence when it came to doing what the business was of the council. And every one of them, and mostly it showed up the same way, but every one of them cared and still does care about this city. And they've shown it through their work before, during, and I imagine after, serving on council. And I feel blessed to have been with this group that we've had, that I've served with And I feel blessed to have been with this group that we've had, that I've served with for the past four years. And just really appreciate the leadership of the mayor, Joan's integrity, and the fact that she sat next to me especially the last two years and had to tolerate my bizarre sense of humor. And Rex sat on the other side, on one side of me or the other, for the past four years. And he was always there and he always cared. And about everything that was going on. This group really is a family. And I think we'll be able to stick together even after the three of them leave the council. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, mayor. First, I want to thank Nancy for her tribute. So sorry. Well, I look forward to having a golf game with Dick now that you have the time. You know, I'm going to miss these three. And they're all so special. But I think what's really causing me to be emotional tonight, and I'll say it now and so I won't have to say it when the new council comes on, is, and I shared this with Mayor Proten, is I want people that make Brighton their home, for this council, to love them as much as we all do. This is my hometown. It's many hometowns to allot. Many of you have made it your hometown. But I think Nancy hit it on the head, is that you do this not for the pay, you do it because you love the community. You love the people you serve with. You love the staff. And all of these three, Joan and Rex and Dick, what I appreciate very much about all of them is their love of family. And I think they brought that to every decision that you make. And decisions are hard. They're hard. You're not popular when you make decisions. And I think what Dick has done is tremendous because you play the hand that you're dealt. You don't get to pick who you serve with. You don't get to pick the economy that you serve with, previous policies that are in place. You work with the hand that you're dealt. And I think he did a tremendous, tremendous job. And he has set Brighton up for success. He set us all up for success. And I really appreciate that. Thank you very much to the three of you.
J.W. can't remember things, so he has to write them down.
Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
My boys.
Mine always is right. Certainly, I want to thank Joan. And the one thing that really comes to my mind that really sticks out in reference to Joan is her new interpretation of policy items. Before, it was, oh, we just skipped right on over that policy item and went right on with the agenda. She's now created a whole new agenda there, which has given a lot of us new avenues to bring up in front of the council and pursue things that are brought to us by the individual constituents out there. And so from that standpoint, Joan, I appreciate the instructions on what we can do with policy items. And that is super. And hey, Rex, even though we haven't been sitting side by side for a number of years, we've been great friends and whatnot. Today, as I flew back into Denver, you was talking about our first responders. There was an opportunity for me to visit with four Air Force cadets. And they were all freshmen and they just completed their first semester at the Air Force Academy, was able to go home for Christmas. And they were just returning and they were catching a bus from Denver to Colorado Springs. And to see the fire in their eyes and what they're talking about doing in serving our country is a wonderful thing to see. And so, you know, we've got a lot of great people that are willing to serve this, this country. And what you said tonight is great. And I think the one thing I will always remember, what you had to say one time, Rex, is that the advice that you gave your son, and I've said this before, is back in the early 80s, he told his son he needed to find a new profession because computers were just a fad. And I, you know, I've had the opportunity to share that with a lot of people. So you will continue in your legend at this point in time. The other part that I actually really remember learning from you is that you were always great in keeping the council, I would say grounded into what's really important. And bringing us back to the Lord and serving each other, having consideration for each other, certainly trying to avoid conflict. And there are so many numerous stories that he could interject and bring us back to the Lord. And I will always remember thinking that when we get in times of difficulties, that I will remember what you have done for us. And so that's pretty awesome. And, you know, Dick, not last, not least, you know, I was thinking on the plane that coming back today for this event tonight, what am I going to say about Dick?
I don't want to hear it.
Yeah, I know you don't. This is my last chance to get him in public. Really what I want to do is thank you from the bottom of my heart that you are responsible for me even considering running for city council. Had it not been for you, that was one of those things that, how many people say, "Well, I want you to come and run for city council." And they'd say, "You think I'm crazy or what?" You know, nobody wants to run for city council. But I will absolutely say that it's one of the most rewarding events and working together with people and staff and seeing the community, the community come together and seeing it all grow together and experience that we're all trying to make it better. So the best thing I think I can do for you, Dick, is I'm going to learn how to play golf so you can have somebody that you can beat on the golf course.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Okay, all right. Well, it's a roast and toast, is what I was told. So there'll be some embarrassing stories.
Your time is up.
That's what I thought was going to happen. You know, when the council first moved into the new city hall, the council members used to share an office together. And we'd do research or meet with constituents. So at that time, I can only assume all the council members were asked to contribute, you know, to decorating, to decorating the office. But Rex really answered the call. He made substantial contributions to its decor. Now, you know, Rex is an avid hunter and passionate outdoorsman. So it followed that when you would walk into the office, there would be so many animal displays, it looked like Mutual of Omaha's Wild Kingdom. Now, I grew up in Iowa, so I'm a bird hunter also. And so when I would come in, I was always excited to see what new addition might be found courtesy of Pastor Bell. But I sensed there were other council members who, you know, certainly who loved the great outdoors, but thought it would be great to leave it outdoors. But that was a fun, that was a fun story. You know, you are probably well aware by now that Pastor Bell is an accomplished storyteller. And sometimes he'll just start telling a story, right? Not out of nowhere, right? Not about, not about a water outfall or a street project or economic development incentive or whatever the subject of the night was. But a story completely unrelated or seemingly unrelated. But the story will inevitably be about people. People caring about other people. And so when the council, you know, gets caught up in the yays and nays and the dollars and cents, Pastor Bell was always there to bring us back to what was truly important, the people that we serve. The people that we should always keep in mind when we make these difficult and important decisions. And the stories were worth every minute. And they were delivered with impeccable timing. And I know that their wisdom will be missed, but the lessons learned won't be forgotten. You've been an amazing blessing to your community, Pastor Bell. A blessing to your council and a blessing to me personally. And I thank you and I love you very much. Joan, my fellow wardmate, I admire your passion for our young people, your diligent work to make a better future for them. You're always so energetic and invested in your actions. You come well-prepared for meetings. You know, as it's been said, we're always excited and curious about what new policy items or five you might bring to us at any given study session. But I will tell you that there were gems, there were gems in there. And it was time well spent mining those gems with you, Joan. And thank you. You challenged us all to sharpen our tools and to reach beyond our grasp. And I thank you for your service to Ward One and to all the residents of Brighton. Mayor McLean. You know, it seems like I've had plenty of chances to tell all the tales over the past several months, but I have saved the best for last.
Your time is up.
This is uncut material.
Your time is up.
And I will be happy to tell you all of these stories in about another hour and it will not be on city property. Did you know there was an art heist at the city hall? Alleged, alleged art heist. Lori Meyer, our coordinator for our highly successful Eye for Art program, reminded us of this story recently. I don't know if you've all heard of it. But one day they came into city hall and a highly valuable piece of art was missing from its prominent place in our lobby. And they decided that it happened on a night not unlike tonight, a Tuesday. It's a council night. So after reviewing some video footage, I did not know they had video footage at the time.
Neither did the mayor.
They saw a person admiring the art, you know, and soon they left the camera's field of view and after a few minutes returned with some other art admirers. Or I think the chief called them accessories to the fact. Whatever you want to call them. And the next thing you know, the piece vanished. But don't worry, no art left the premise. It was merely moved to a more honored place, you know. And thankfully, the video footage exonerated all parties. We are off the hook for that, as I recall. And yeah, as I recall that, it was a beautiful portrait that was, you know, I think he wanted it in his own office to greet him each day. You know, traveling with the mayor is always an education and an adventure.
Don't go there, Kirby.
He is truly the Picasso of painting the town. And he paints them all bright and red. Oh, he knows everybody, not just in Adams County or in Colorado, but all over the country. You know, recently when we were at the National League of Cities in Charlotte, we heard from some amazing speakers. And I remember there was a photo opportunity that the mayor had with Magic Johnson up there. And out of nowhere, a complete stranger comes up to me and asks, "Is this the line to get your picture taken with Dick?" You know, I also learned only recently that the mayor, I have a gift for you, but I'm going to open it. That Mayor Dick has a spirit animal. His spirit animal is the unicorn. So I want to give you that to remember your time with us. You know, it also pays homage to your fiscal responsibility and previous banking career. If you guys want to shift in a little for the guy.
He's off council. I'm done. Pass it around the room. Thank you, Kirby.
You're welcome. But...
That's enough.
Mayor McLean has been an amazing leader. He never takes credit. He always defers to the team. Mayor, great leaders like you give us confidence in our own abilities. You've always insisted on collaboration from all the council, that we work as a team. And when the going got tough, you kept our eyes not down at our feet, but up on the horizon. Everyone's voice was always important to our mayor. And you brought out the best in us for the good of Brighton. And as Nancy, our first lady, said, "You are one of a kind. There will never be another one like you." Thank you, boss.
Thank you, Kirby.
And just for all of you, you've all been a part of the projects that are shaping our community. And they take years to accomplish. And they take a shared vision for the future that must be passed on to the next stewards of Brighton's destiny. You've seen projects come to fruition like the Coisenuma Hishenuma Farm, a dream that was begun long ago. And you've laid the foundations for great projects to come. And although you'll no longer be asked to deliberate on Tuesday nights, your wise voices will be heard in the back of our minds. And your dreams for Brighton will go on. To each of you, my sincere thanks and appreciation. It has been an honor and my good fortune to have served with all of you. Best wishes and I thank you for your service to Brighton.
Thank you.
Well, I believe all has been said. Every bit of it is true. Joan has been wonderful. Rex, also a wonderful person. One thing that I've seen everybody omitted from telling you about the mayor is he has a great sense of humor. And I'll tell you, when things get kind of ugly, he uses it, which really lightens the situation. So I'm going to miss that mayor. And I'm going to miss, of course, Joan and Rex. And stop by and visit because I have to deal with these two unless we suck up to the new mayor and he moves me, but we'll see what happens. Anyway, thank you all for coming and spending your evening with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Well, now, Mr. Mayor, I think we have some gifts.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
I don't want the gifts. I'm leaving.
I'll speak loud. So first, we have certificates from the City of Brighton in recognition and appreciation of Joan Kness for four years of dedicated service representing Ward One and the citizens of Brighton, Colorado. A council member from January 2014 to January 2018. She served on the Brighton Legacy Foundation, the Brighton Cultural Arts Commission, the Capital Fee Facility Foundation, the Eye for Art Committee, and Link. And it's presented this day, January 2nd, 2018.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, and we have a gift for Joan.
Oh, thank you.
And I guess protocol means you open it now.
I don't like to open things in front of them.
Well, you don't have any say in this.
Yeah, I do. Is it nice or is it ticking?
Just open it. Um, just open it.
I hope it's some golf balls. I need these. Yes, so I can give them to Adam, so he can garden in our yard, as opposed to Joan. Thank you, that's a great gift.
Right.
That's awesome. That is very cool. Thank you very much.
And we also have this one.
I'd open this one, too.
Nice wrapping.
What?
Nice wrapping.
Really nice wrapping.
I'd like to say I did it, but I didn't.
I would say Cheryl, perhaps.
I think so, too.
Read that, Cheryl. This one, I need a knife.
They wouldn't let any in the building?
Oh.
They were confiscated.
Star police officers doing their job all the time?
Phil Daley had to take his back to the car.
That's probably true.
Makes me nervous when he backs up.
Hey, Joan, I went around security.
I got it now.
Oh, you got it now?
Yeah.
She kept looking in the box.
I know. I was looking for those golf balls. Oh, wow. So, you know, one of the real blessings in our community is the artwork. And every time there's a show, I always buy things. I didn't want Adam to know that, so, anyway. So this is a gift certificate for me to buy a piece of art. Yeah, that is really a nice gift. It's a great gift. What if it's the same one that the mayors took, though? What if I wanted that one?
I don't think that piece was for sale.
Oh, okay. Cute, that's awesome.
I have another certificate of appreciation. This is in recognition and appreciation of Rex Bell. For eight years of dedicated service representing Ward Two and the citizens of Brighton, Colorado, a council member from November 2009 to January 2018. He served on the Adams County Water Quality Association, the Brighton Housing Authority Board, the Brighton Legacy Foundation, the CML Policy Board, Dr. Koch, the Highway 85 Coalition, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Lodging Tax Committee, and the Rocky Mountain Authority, presented this day, January 2nd, 2018.
Oh, and you get to do some gift and wrapping, too.
Oh, mercy.
Where's that knife?
This is nerve-wracking, if anybody wanted to know. Embarrassing.
That's what I thought.
You sure are slow.
See how fast you're going to be.
Again, you're probably a little late. It's all mistake.
Now I need it. Thank you.
It's under three inches, chief.
How do you know those rules? Yeah.
I don't know, I just made it up. I don't know. You might need it for the next one.
Safety first.
I love it. I love it. My grandson will really enjoy this. That's great. Uh-oh. Sorry, sorry, man.
Don't look at me. There's nothing else in there, Rex.
I think I see some corks in there.
We'll take the box woman look later.
That's really cute.
That was so humiliating. Here's another one.
And now to... And that's from the city. I'd like to say this is from me, but it's you. And now to the man who has presented more certificates than you can shake a stick up. Here's one for you. In recognition and appreciation of Richard McLean, for four years of dedicated service representing Ward One, and eight years serving as mayor and representing the citizens of Brighton, Colorado. Council member, November 2005 to January 2009. Mayor from November 2009 until January 2018. He served on the Adams County Airport Coordinating Committee, that was your favorite one. The Adams County Blue Ribbon Commission, the Adams County Economic Development Board, the Brighton Economic Development Board, the E-470 Board, oh, another one of your favorites, the Lockview Sewer Board, the North Area Transportation Alliance, the Regional Race Water Treatment Plant, the Senior Advisory Board, and the Weld County Mayor-Bolzike Committee, presented this January 2nd, 2018.
Just in case.
Where's the knife?
Oh, it can't be a golf club.
No.
Better.
Says I ought to post it. Watch it.
It's hitters.
Oh, that's pretty close.
It's a Ken Krantz autograph.
New putter. I think Barney Rubble would like this. Yeah, boy, that's going to work. I bet it doesn't hurt my game. Thank you.
There's one more.
That's cute.
God, it's heavy.
I don't know how to wrap these things. How many rolls of Scotch tape did you use? Envelope. It's probably a bill for the wrapping paper and Scotch tape. Oh, Cheryl Johnson got this, but then they put my name on it, so I think it's supposed to be for Cheryl. Buffalo Run gift certificate. Yay, yay.
Yeah, mine.
And not to be outdone, Todd Creek wants me, too. Lessons at both of them.
It's your new putter.
That day that Andy and I were out shooting the pictures, we found a lot of golf balls on the course that had your name on them. That day, we found 268 golf balls that all say Mayor McLean. You must have had really a tough round the day before that.
The paybacks are going to be low. Balls. Thank you, thank you, everybody. I really do appreciate it.
That was fun.
Thank you for letting me serve as your mayor, because it was the vote of the people that got me in. And I'm surprised you voted me in a second time, but thank you. And it's certainly been a great privilege to serve this city, and to see it grow and prosper, and all the things that we have here that we didn't have before. But we all always and will always have great people here. And I look at the council that we have, and I look at the council of the future. We're going forward, not backward. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. I'm going to miss you. But I'm going to come to council meetings when it says, "Public invited to be heard. A matter's not on the agenda." Will you just wait? Where are we at?
Public invited to be heard on matters not on the agenda.
We'll cancel that part, no. Looks like Henry's coming.
Did anybody sign in?
Did anybody sign in?
Nobody signed in.
Oh, there is a sign-in sheet. Thank you. Christopher Dusset, oh, Christopher Dusset of Angel and Angel Chavez. 560, 5615 Kildare Street, Brighton, subject education. We'd like to address the council about education in Brighton, particularly Heritage Academy. So if you want to come up to the podium right there on my right, straight ahead, you have five minutes, please.
All right, thank you. My name is Chris Dussey. I am 22.
Hi, my name is Angel Chavez. I'm 20 years old, and thank you for this opportunity.
Yeah, we just want to say, first of all, congratulations, and thank you for all the work that you've done, Dick. And we really appreciate it. We just came here to talk to you today briefly about just like education in Brighton and heritage, and we thought this would be a good time to make it a widely-known thing about like Heritage Academy and some of the problems. And I'm going to let Angel talk about some of that.
Hi, so my name is Angel. It's nice to see all of you guys. I went to Heritage Academy for about half of the end of my freshman year to junior year before I ended up dropping out and I completed my GED with Ames Community College. Some things that I wanted to talk about about heritage when I went there, and some things that I notice now that might still be going on. When I went there, a lot of the teachers that I had, since they have a really short staff, I think maybe there was 10 or less than 10 teachers. It was really hard to stay motivated and to want to learn, because a lot of the times with the short staff, those teachers there are teaching multiple subjects that they're not as qualified for. So when I was a sophomore, I was put into a class where I had a teacher that also taught math. And I had asked her job title once before, and I think she told me she was a social worker. And so it was just hard to learn math in that class, and I didn't progress very far because I wasn't learning what I needed to, because the teacher that I was learning from wasn't very qualified. So that's just one of the problems, is that they're really short-staffed, and a lot of the teachers end up having to teach subjects that they don't really know a lot about. And I had multiple classes where a teacher would teach me once in the morning and then once in the evening a different subject. So I think for that, for children developing, like, it's just kind of hard, because if they don't know a lot about what they're teaching, they can't teach every student specifically to their needs. And another thing I also wanted to talk about was the fact that there's no... Well, when I went there now, I'm not familiar really very well with what's going on now, but there had been no extracurricular activities, like after school, or there'd been no artwork classes or music classes. There was a class on stained glass, however, which I didn't end up taking. But that's kind of a concern, because children need that, children need to be able to express themselves. And whether, you know, they do that at home or, you know, at school, they still need to be able to do it. And if they don't, if they aren't able to do that at home, I think it's just really important for the development of a child to be able to express themselves in an environment with other students where they can feel comfortable enough to want to do those things, maybe, you know, learn something about themselves, like, you know, how a lot of people take music classes, and then they learn, you know, they want to play an instrument for the rest of their life, and that, you know, pushes them further with opportunities. Chris, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, so I understand that Heritage is a private institution for high schoolers, and it seems like Heritage Academy is a place for people to kind of like go to a school where they can be accepted for like at-risk behavior or falling behind. But the problem is that with the private, like, part of that...
One minute.
One minute, okay. With the part of that that's being private, it doesn't seem like there's much of an initiative to take into some kind of system of mentorship for these students. I know a lot of them were heavily involved in drug usage and drug abusage, and I don't know if there's any substance abuse prevention programs going on there. And I just wanted to see if there was like anything that like is going on. We're not coming here today just to complain. We want solutions. We want to see how we can get involved and how you guys can get involved, and if there's any connections that could be made today so that things could be carried on from a youth to like council member partnership. And we just want to talk about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know whether you know it or not, but Councilwoman Kness was formerly the president of our school board, and maybe she could suggest something to you. I think that's where it needs to go.
I really admire both of you for coming forward and speaking publicly. I don't know if you've done this or not, have you gone and spoken to the Board of Education? Because really, a city... Because really, city council doesn't really govern the school district. And I know the Board of Education would really appreciate hearing from you. It's important that they do. And they meet on Tuesday nights, just like this. And it would be the same process where you would just sign in, then there would be an opportunity for you to speak, just like you did tonight, tell your story. So I think it's really important that you do that because they're the ones that can really partner with you. I like that you said that. And you'll be able to then make a difference for the students that are currently enrolled there. So I would contact the school district tomorrow. Somebody will be there in the office and find out when the next school board meeting is and then plan to attend that. So don't give up. Just need to connect you with the people that can really make the changes that you would like to see. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Yes, yeah, thank you. We just figured it'd be a good thing to advocate for and speak to the mayor about and everybody. So we're glad that we did that anyways. I come from Gunnison. I'm in school at Western State. And I have a couple of meetings with the council members and too, so, and they talk about this. So I wasn't sure if, when or where to put my feet. So thank you. Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Everybody had enough. And entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion from Councilwoman Caness, second from Councilman Humbert. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Renalid.
I call to order this meeting of the Brighton City Council. First item of business is the swearing-in of new council members. And I'd like to introduce Judge Kristen Brown, who will do the honors. Thank you, Judge Brown.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call roll?
Mayor Kreiter?
Present.
Councilmember Baca?
Here.
Councilmember Blackhurst?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Present.
Councilmember Humbert?
Here.
Councilmember Johnston?
Present.
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Pollock?
Here.
Councilmember Wallen?
Present.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item three, approval of the regular city agenda. Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, no, there are no changes to tonight's agenda.
Hearing that, what's the pleasure of council? Councilman Blackhurst?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Blackhurst. Councilman Mills? I thought you raised your hand, sir.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Roll call vote.
Mayor Kreiter?
Yes.
Councilmember Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Blackhurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Humbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Mills?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollock? Councilmember Wallen?
Yes.
Your Honor, the motion passes nine zero to approve the regular agenda.
Thank you. Item five is ceremonies and comments from the new city council members. And to quote Mayor McLean, as mayor, "I guess I'll go first." First and foremost, it's my honor to serve as the mayor of Brighton. I promise not to be wordy tonight, but it is an honor. And I wanna thank everybody who helped make this possible. And my promise to the city is we will work together, I will listen, and we will build Brighton together. I would like to introduce some very special people who are here tonight with me. First and foremost, the gal behind the phone taking the picture of my rock. My wife Judy. My daughter Melissa and her husband Mike and my new grandson Lincoln. A pleasant surprise, my son John is here from Arkansas. And my son Ben. I also have with us tonight my brother Gary and his beautiful fiancee Nancy. My brother Dominic and my sister Carol Ann. I also have several members of my sister city's family. And if they'd all just take a wave, Sister City's a very important part to my life and I thank you all for coming tonight. That's super special. And there's also one more special guest, or two special guests in the audience tonight with me. Got to take a deep breath. My mom's best friend from the very first day of kindergarten, Marlene Steber. And her daughter, the mayor of Fort Leptin, Zoe Steber. Thank you for... I have many other friends in the audience. I just thank you all for being here tonight. And we wanna party a little bit sooner, so I will not be wordy. Thank you. Councilman Blackhurst?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I'll introduce my wife, who's with me tonight, Rhonda, sitting in the audience. She has really been supportive of me in all of my endeavors. And I'm sure some of you know some of my endeavors, but she's always been very supportive of what I wanna do. And I wanna thank her very much. And obviously thank the people in Ward Three who've put their trust in me to fill this role and to represent them on city council. You know, this afternoon I received a email from my nephew, who's a police officer in Edina, Minnesota. That's a suburb of Minneapolis, St. Paul. To congratulate me on this honor being sworn in tonight as city council person. And I texted him back and said, you know, this is kind of an adventure for me because I go from one of the most respected professions in the world, where I spent 47 years, to now a little bit different view of people who are elected positions, so... It's a different... We have to keep things in perspective, but I just wanna thank the Lord for all the blessings that I've been given and hope he helps to guide me. I will represent all of the citizens of Brighton to the best of my ability. And hopefully I'll be able to contribute based upon the experience that I've had here for many, many years serving the citizens of Brighton and the wonderful employees that we have. And definitely I'll always be an advocate for our police department. I appreciated Pastor Bell saying the things, it's been very kind of emotional three days. I'm friends with Sheriff Pell, who, from Boulder, whose son was one of the victims of that shooting. And I just can't imagine what he had to go through, being in law enforcement himself, to go up to the hospital and find his son was in critical condition. Fortunately, it sounds like he's gonna pass, but that's something we always think about, that I always think about. And I do definitely appreciate the great service our police department and all of our city employees give to this community. Thank you.
Good evening. I cannot explain how honored and humbled I am to be sitting here today. While the media and the uninformed often look at the presidential campaign and presidential politics as something that is more significant than it might be, what we do here, not here at City Hall, but what we do here on city council, it is one of the most significant daily governmental events that can happen. It's what really does the change that affects our everyday lives. That's why this is such an honor to me. We as a council need to remember the significance of our decisions when we're making them and really move forward as a city and as a team. And as many of you might know, my election was a true grassroots effort. East Brighton really came together as a community for our elec... For this election, but for our community, for betterment. And I just wanna thank all those that did make this happen. But I also get often, I'm asked, "Why did I wanna run for office? Are you crazy?" Well, when I was around 10 years old, I had a educator, a teacher, Miss Noble. And Miss Noble instilled in us that representing others in our democracy is a sacred thing. It's something that you should be taken, it should be taken very seriously. That feeling has never left me, not one time. While I openly disagreed with Councilwoman Caness about how she represented us, I want everyone to understand that like Miss Noble, Joan Caness, she had a positive influence over thousands of her students during her highly regarded teaching career. She also helped other teachers become better teachers. Her influence has to echo across all of Colorado. And I wanna make sure that we thank Joan for her service. And you know, last week I was having lunch with someone I really look up to and I couldn't stop talking about this campaign. And I told him that for months I was called a liar and I could not, I was told I could not win. I was too wet behind the ears. And he looked me right in the eyes and he said, "The campaign is over." He was right, the campaign for this seat is over. But the campaign to make sure that East Brighton has a voice on this council, that campaign has just begun. And while development is key to our future, it's probably key to almost every city's future, I wanna make sure that we remember that poor development deals made in the back rooms could tear this city apart. And it is time that the small percentage of unethical developers no longer get to take the shortcuts. It's time that we as a city draw that line in the sand and we tell all of the developers that come into our city that you don't make our city great. Our city was great when a developer comes here, it's great when they leave. And we need to make sure that our city will continue to really focus on the future and our development and doing the correct developments, not just any that come along. And also I wanna say, with Kirby Wallen and I now serving together for East Brighton, Ward One has that true representation and we're not gonna let that opportunity pass to have our voices heard. I couldn't be here and be that voice if it wasn't for those that supported my campaign. Valerie Wolf in the back of the room, she was the person that talked me into running. And during the campaign, Valerie, Danny, I was cursing you, obviously, it was just craziness. But now I can honestly say, "Thank you very much." That means a lot to be here. And also, my in-laws Jim and Miriam and my brother-in-law Brian, thank you very much for watching my little baby Olivia while I was out knocking doors and doing all the things to get here. Couldn't have done it without you. My mom and dad also happen to be here, Bill and Susan. Mom, thanks so much for teaching me the spirituality that really affects my everyday life. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. Dad, I watched you transform a small-town fire department, become the fire chief, and make it to where it now saves lives daily in that small town. And what you did taught me civic duty and the idea of service. Thank you. But most importantly, I have to thank my campaign manager. She also happens to be my rock and my best friend. Patricia, you are more than just my wife. You're the one that made this all happen. And during those dark times over the last 10 years, you're the ones, you're the one that got us out of those times. During the times that were great and you were smiling, I now remember to preserve those times with you. So thank you. You got me to finish my undergraduate program, finish grad school. Without you, I wouldn't be sitting here and who knows where I would be sitting. Thank you. But I'd like to wrap up by using a quote from my football coach in college. He would walk around us on the field right before the games and he'd yell many things to get us all pumped up, no doubt about it. But one thing he would say always stuck with me, he would say, "In this life, where on this earth would you rather be than right here, right now, about to play a college football game?" I always believed that that would be my excitement, my life, and what I would want to always do. I didn't think there'd ever be a place that I would feel like there is that place that is the right here and right now. But I can tell you, right here, right now, helping to represent my friends and neighbors is that place. And I didn't know it then, but I know it now. Thank you all for those that supported me. I won't let you down. Thank you.
Councilman Mills?
Thank you. I wanted to show my gratitude I have to my, not only the people that elected me, but to my family. I have my family here tonight, down towards the back. I have my lovely wife Kathy. She's with our three boys, Clayton, Cody, and Cooper. And even one of my nephews, or a couple of my nephews are here. And also my dad... And also, my dad, I'd like to thank him for raising me, and my brother's back here and a couple of his kids, and I have some other friends here, and also, my sister-in-law, she was a real support in helping me in this election. I'm really excited to be an advocate, not only for the people in the area of Ward Two that I live in, but just for all of Brighton. I'm excited to bring a great voice, to promote an awesome infrastructure that we'll continue to build here. My ward also contains the area of Old Town Brighton, downtown Brighton. I want to make sure that is running well, and I'm excited to be that voice to do that. I also, I support the police here. I was on the Citizen Police Academy this fall, and it was a really wonderful opportunity to learn what our law enforcement do. And I'm excited to work with them and the different issues that are facing our community. And I just want to build bridges here. I don't want to have anything negative go on, I want to make sure there's good common ground in building bridges to our great community. So I appreciate this council for accepting me too. I've been to several council meetings this past fall to learn about what they do, and I'm excited to get to work, so let's build a great Brighton together.
Thank you, and we welcome the new members to our council. We'll work together and make Brighton just all that much better. Next item in the agenda is item six, general business, reorganization of the city council, which is the selection of the new mayor pro temp. I will poll council and ask each member if they are interested, and if they are, I will nominate them for mayor pro temp, and then we will vote as a council and select a new mayor pro temp tonight. So that being said, I'll start down on this end and ask Councilwoman Pollak. Councilman Wallen?
No, thank you, sir.
Councilman Edwards?
Yes, I would be interested.
Then I nominate Councilman Edwards for mayor pro temp. Councilman Blackhurst?
No, thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Not a chance, Mr. Mayor.[1353.33][1353.33](laughter).
Councilman Humbert?
No, thank you.
Councilman Mills?
Not at this time.
Councilwoman Baca?
Yes, Mayor.
I nominate Councilwoman Baca for mayor pro temp. So with that, council members, your candidates for mayor pro temp are Councilman JW Edwards and Councilwoman Lynn Baca. Please vote on the ballots that are in front of you and fold them, and our city attorney and our city clerk will pick those up and count the votes.[1392.11][1392.11](pause). And while they're doing that, Councilman Edwards has agreed to sing us a little tune.[1418.15][1418.15](laughter).
Aw, man.
Thank you, Councilman Edwards.[1431.21][1431.21](singing).
Do you mean to use the old gavel?
Yeah, yeah. I just used my McLean so it wasn't whacked very hard. Whacks a gavel, anything like a golf ball, that thing's gonna go, that was good.
That was good.
It turned out pretty good. Steve's little guns. They had to really put it gently. Oh, I don't think that's appropriate. I was fucking, I didn't even think about that. I didn't even think about the cameras, because I was in on that too. I hear some footsteps. Do we have white smoke or black smoke? Madam City Clerk, would you please announce the results?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Edwards received the majority of the votes.
Congratulations. Councilman Edwards, you're a major candidate. If we could ask Judge Brown to come back to the stage and swear in.
Is she gone?
Is she gone? She left?
Do it at the next meeting.
Well, we will do that at the next meeting, then. Would Natalie do that?
She can, if she knows it.
Natalie, would you?
Does she know it?
Do you know it?
Sure.
She has to.
You know it?
She's got it.
Sure. Okay. You want to each hold one up?
There we go.
I, JW Edwards.
Aye, JW Edwards.
Do solemnly swear by the ever-living God.
Do solemnly swear by the ever-living God.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The office of mayor pro temp.
The office of mayor pro temp.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.[1577.21][1577.21](applause).
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Edwards.
Thank you.
Before I ask for adjournment, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege. I received a gift from a dear friend of mine upon being elected mayor just a few days ago. It was a bottle of Crown Royal, so...
Okay.
And I don't know if you've ever thought about reading the boxes that that stuff comes in, but something kind of moved me to read the box, and I'd like to read you what it says on the side of the box, and really is a challenge to council and our promise to the city. And if you'll understand that the term royal and the term crown are used in here, but there, if you just think about our place for the city and for the citizens, our place, if you would, it goes like this. There's a code to being royal, it's who you are, not just what you do. Remembering where you started, where you've been, what matters. Having the courage to accept you didn't do it alone. Takes a village to raise a man. Giving back before taking another damn thing so you can leave your legacy, where your blood came from. It's crossing the line and pulling every single person with you. With something more important than courage, gratitude. Take care of your own, being immovable, a monument to your roots. It's not a choice, having your chest swell with pride, not for yourself, but for the people who made you who you are. Doing what they always saw in you, making every moment of your past a reason for your existence. I see you, I am you, I did not forget you. Generous is the head that wears the crown. Respect.
Wow, that's it.
And I read that before I even had some of it.[1703.91][1703.91](laughter). And with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Councilman Humbert?
Mr. Mayor, I move for adjourn.
I have a motion for adjournment. Councilman Baca?
Thank you, Mayor. I second that.
I've got a proper motion and a second for adjournment. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We stand adjourned. Thank you.[1734.33][1734.33](applause).
Good for you.[1736.33][1736.33](applause).